I was telling people, I said, "No." I'm telling people to stand and say, "In our section," I said, "No, we are..."
Yeah, we stayed till the very end.
Oh, no, there was no way I was leaving that.
Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on June 7th, 10:00 a.m., Commissioners Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the notification pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag and all leaders. Father, I want to thank you for your love, your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. Father, I pray that you'll be with our first responders and law enforcement and the folks that were, the families that were impacted by the deaths in Uvalde and around the country, Father. Father, I pray that you'll continue to bless us. Father, we need your mercy and your grace. I ask, Father, that you'll be with us this morning. We make decisions for the county. I ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. And Lisa, was it going to be on this one or? Okay. No citizen input. Consider and take action on Agenda 3, 322. Approval of Resolution 2211, establishing a salary grievance committee process for elected officials.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion claimed seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four is request approval of sheriff's office to apply for DOJ FY 2022 enhanced collaborative model task force to combat human trafficking grant.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is approval of juvenile services to accept supplemental and emergent funds from Southeast Texas Juvenile Chiefs Association.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is consider and take action on payment for property coverage with Texas Association of Counties.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. And I think, Lisa, this one you wanted to speak.
Yeah. Morning Commissioners. So, this year has, over the last few years, there's been some things that have happened to the county, you know, out of our, I'm trying to think of my words here. We couldn't control it. Weather, for one. Hail damage. We've had some, a ton of property damages based on the two hail claims we've had. We've had a freeze that cost us a building, basically, for a while, and we had to get that repaired. So, TAC has presented a new premium and a new deductible, three options for you. I believe you have something. If you don't have it, I have some copies here if you need one. Basically, things to consider when making a decision on which option you would like. Cost of construction has gone up. We've added several buildings to the policy. And one of the things to consider as well is, just to explain why this is all going up, is how much we've received in claims based on what we already pay. Right now, as of the last three to four years. Four. Four years, we have, let's see. The premiums? We've paid $826,000 in total contribution. But we have taken, basically because of damages, over eight million in the last four years, two of those being the major hail storms, unfortunately. So, right now, the three options, our deductible will be changing. Our current deductible is $5,000 for property damage per event. So, if we have a hailstorm, we are currently paying $5,000 in a deductible for if it destroys eight buildings, we pay only $5,000 deductible plus our premium. The premium's paid at the beginning of the, of the coverage dates. So, the new options, the changes that are coming in front of you are, so you've got option one, to change the deductible from $5,000 to $15,000. And then your premium would be, $353,000, sorry, $353,611. You can pay a higher deductible per event and have a lower premium. If you pay $25,000 deductible per event, you can have a lower premium of $301,527. Or you could pay an even higher premium of fif, I'm sorry, deductible of $50,000 and get an even lower premium of $283,274. So, this is going to be something that y'all will want to discuss and decide which is the best option for the county. You have to decide, do I want to pay a higher deductible per event? Because we don't know how many events are going to happen. Before the first hailstorm, there was hardly ever anything that happened. Or do you want to pay a higher premium and get a lower deductible? So...
I'll jump in. The property market remains challenging for everyone. Globally, just, this isn't just specific for Texas. My recommendation on the options that you have would be option two, to kind of go in the middle, depending on what your risk appetite is. You might want to go with the higher deductible, the $50,000. But probably for this year, I would say probably my recommendation would be go in the middle with that. Very important times now for your property maintenance programs to be robust and make sure you're doing everything diligently on a schedule, just due to the rising costs, you know, to repair, shortages, labor. I mean, it all multiplies into this. The reinsurance market continues to remain very hard. There's been carriers that have exited the market. The reinsurance market is shrinking for us to be able to find capacity. The pool is stable, and these are difficult decisions at this time, I know, for yourselves to make this decision. But as Leslie said, we have paid out 8.5 million in the claims and took in 826,000 over the past four years. We do appreciate you being part of the risk management pool. We're here to help you. If you need assistance with your property maintenance program, we can have your risk control consultant come in, who's Joe Chefcek, and work with you on that.
How many actual events did we have?
Eleven. There were eleven. Eleven claims equaled the 8.5.
Okay, but I mean, but it, but it's per event, as was explained, so there were two major events. There were three major events.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we're charged, our deductible.
The deductible, yes.
So, were there, in addition to those three that you mentioned, or what were the other ones?
So, for 2020, they, for the hailstorm, that, that claim was 5.3.
Okay, so that was one event.
Yes, yes.
So, winter storm?
And then the winter storm in 2021 would have been one event, but then you also had hailstorm.
Another hailstorm.
And that was 3.1.
So, we only actually had three events?
Yes, well, so, so when I say, so basically, three claims for those major storms, but there were actually 11 total claims over the last, was it five years or four years?
Four, yeah.
Four years. So, we've had vandalism claim, we've had, you know, those are just a lot smaller in, in cost than, than these three major ones.
And so, we're talking about roughly a 5% increase in premium if we go with option twos you've recommended, correct?
I don't have it broken out by percentage, but...
I just, if we got 844,000, I guess that's about, it's about eight, about a 5%. A little more than 5%.
I don't think 826 was for one year. I think that was, is the 826,000 premium, was that for three years?
No, that's four. That's four years.
That's for four years.
Yes, that's for 2018.
So, that's a 25% increase instead.
Okay.
Judge, I'm not, I don't think I'm well-prepared to make a decision on this today. Is there any chance that we could get some more information or some, some more advice? I appreciate your, your advice, but I think Steve's right. 25%, that's a lot of, a lot of money.
So, are we running up on any deadline?
The coverage renewed on 7/1, and I believe the $25,000 deductible is a 17% increase from where you are.
Okay. Yeah, I assumed...
Yeah, it's a 17% increase. And just so that you also know, your total insured value from last year to this year has increased 2%. So, it's 15% increase, 2% is due to your total insured value.
So, something else to consider as well, we have added several buildings in the last few years. We've built the new Ag Extension Building. We bought the BISD Building, the Highway 21 Maintenance Building. So, the, as we are adding property as well, that also increases our premium each year anyway. I just want to make sure that that's considered as well.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioners and Judge, I'd like to hear from our Budget Officer. Ms. Connor, is budget, audit, and everything financial?
All things financial.
Tear it down. Specific question?
I'd like your input on this. What's your recommendation or your thoughts? I'm attempting to agree with my colleagues. Excuse me. We need more information. I don't want to make a decision today.
Okay, so help me figure out what information would help you make a decision.
Well, what's the best option? When you look at the one, two, and three options given us, and you had time to really, you have not.
No, but...
And I don't want to put you on the spot.
I, well...
Sure, go on.
Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know what's going to happen in the future. If you, I mean, you read the newspapers and you listen to the ecologists, we're going to have more hail, maybe. I don't know. And so, it's a guess. That's why I'm asking if you can think, do you want us to compare to, I mean, we haven't gone out for bid in a long time, I don't think we could do that. It would be difficult to do by July 1st. We could consider self-funding on vehicles. After today's workshop, that might, you might understand more why I'm hesitant on that.
Sure.
We could, considering the hail, I would not recommend self-funding on buildings. We could consider the buildings that, I mean, we do have one going to auction, I think. It's not much, though, and then we, if we, I mean, we could look at those options, tearing something down. I hate to say that, but, you know, if the insurance is more than we're using, there's a couple of buildings that we're not using.
So, Katie, is your recommendation that we take action on this today, or that we at least consider taking bids or looking at, at the options more carefully?
What you could do with tax permission is do a six-month policy.
I had a director with me.
I don't know if they offer six-month policies and then you could bid it. I mean, that would give you, yeah.
We don't have to make a decision today, but I think we need to start today gathering more information. Commissioners and Judge, I see Charles standing. Do you have something you want to bring to us, Charles, our purchasing office?
With the, with the short amount of time available, it would be difficult to bid to have a policy in effect by the expiration of this one.
Oh, okay.
The best way to test the market and make sure you're getting the most competitive price, I think TAC's done a great job for us, but
Yes.
in order to test any market and see what the market bears, is to bid it out. In addition to that, I don't know if we have the expertise necessary on staff to be able to write that bid and evaluate proposals and so forth. The folks at TAC and the insurance folks are very, very, very in smart. They know their stuff, and there's a lot of things that actuarial type stuff that we would need assistance with.
I think there's some benefits in the collective perspective of TAC because they're not just covering us, but everybody else. And I don't have anything that tells me that there's any type of problem in our relationship as far as claims handling that has taken place. So, I think those are benefits that are there that I wouldn't want to go out and look at a comparative. I don't sense the need to go out for a comparative bid type of process relative to that, because I don't, I don't think the market's going to be able to overcome those issues that are very positive in our relationship here in the economy and scale that TAC has. So, I think that I'm okay with, with that. And I think the, I think the only question that I'm hearing from the Commissioners is is option one, two, or three relative to what we want to do in seeking additional information as far as that goes. Personally, I'm, I'm happy with the recommendation, and I'm happy with looking just at the numbers, the option two, but if other Commissioners would like additional details, I don't see a problem in waiting and coming back a week from now after we've got additional information.
And just to clarify, I didn't mean to indicate or imply in any way that we have any relationship issues.
No, that was understood to begin with, yes.
I have a question. The 11 events were over four years?
That was over a four-year period.
So, so it costs the county $55,000 in, in deductibles?
Yes, over the 11 years.
Yeah, over the 11 events.
I mean, I'm sorry, over the four years, sorry.
Over four years, the 11 events. And if we were to go to option two, that would have been $275,000 over four years.
Yes.
Yeah, and considering that we paid 800 and some odd thousand dollars in premiums and received back eight million in benefits, I'm inclined to go with the recommendation of option two.
Okay, and just to...
And we have a time crunch, because our policy...
Give a little bit of a clarification as well. So, when, when we raise the deductible, obviously, the deductible is already going to raise from 5,000 to 15 at least.
Yeah.
So, some of the events that happened, we've had a jail cell get destroyed. That costs, that's going to cost between 20 and 30,000. So, if we go with the option two and it only ends up being a $20,000 claim, that's, that wouldn't be something that we would consider as a claim in the future. We would just have to pay for it outright. And there's like, we had a car run into the Health District Building. That was a $7,000 claim. TAC gave us the 2,000 based, you know, minus the deductible. So, there will be some drop-off since the deductible is being raised. There will be some drop-off of some of those types of claims that would not be going through TAC per se because of the deductible amount. So, that's something to consider as well. There will be less claims for them to consider, we hope, you know, right? But like Katie said, there's, there's no way to predict if we're going to get one hailstorm or if we're going to get six major things that happen, a hurricane, you know, there's no way to predict. So, you know, her recommendation of the middle of the line, 25,000, is good, but if you decide, well, you know, we don't think that we're going to have, we hope to not have a bunch of events, and we're willing to pay $50,000 per event, then you could pick option three, which would raise the premium only 26,000. So...
I'm going to ask Leslie, can I ask Leslie a question?
Sure.
Have we done things to reduce our claims with the claims we did have?
That's a good question.
So, so, basically, the property is a little different beast. We've done things to reduce claims on auto. Property, basically what Lisa was saying is, you know, keeping, maintaining the buildings. Currently, we're replacing a bunch of roofs, and we're, we're actually upgrading those roof, the thickness of those roofs, so that if we do get more hailstorms, we're hoping that that will protect us. So, yes, we are doing some things.
Even a new roof is better in a hailstorm than an older.
Than a 20-year-old roof, yes, yes, for sure. We actually have a ton of roofs on, that are out for bid right now, and several that are being worked on. So, yes, we are doing some of that. We're actually upgrading the Brazos Center roof because there were some issues with ponding and all that, so they're upgrading part of that, and that costs a little extra money. But we are doing some preventative in those cases so that hopefully we don't get hit as hard next time.
I would like to share with you just overall what the TAC risk management pool's renewal was for property. It was 17.6% is what we experienced overall for the whole state of Texas. So, it's just, it's difficult times right now. Unfortunately, the predictions for bad weather and hurricane season, the forecast is not sunshine, so. Yeah, we're preparing, so I don't want that at all, but we're preparing.
Well, I thank you all for the information provided. And if my colleagues feel that they have enough information to make a selection, I'm inclined to do that. We have a very good relationship, I must say, with TAC, not only in this instance, but any subject that we've wanted, reference material or training for staff. We can always come to you guys and legal questions.
Yes, we are here to help.
Yes, and you have been a great partner, so...
And again, I just stressed, we are here to help you with your property maintenance program. I don't know where you are with it, but reach out to us. We will embrace you and, and help you make sure that you're diligently doing that on a schedule.
And on that note, maintenance does work with TAC on some of their maintenance schedules.
That's true.
Good. Also, I do want to remind you, we do do the property appraisals as property of your property program every four years. This year, it is upcoming later this summer, fall, the Asset Works appraisal will be here to appraise any buildings that are new that you have taken over or any buildings over 250,000. So, again, that's very important for you, for your property program, is that your schedules are always up to date. Leslie's office does a fabulous job keeping us updated, deleting buildings when needed, notifying us of lease building contents, so I do want to compliment you on that. Thank you.
A question on that. Would that, every four years, you say there's a valuation?
Yes.
Would a increase in valuation, is the way that our relationship with TAC as far as our property insurance goes, would that cause our premium to change or our coverage to change?
Not with your coverage. Not with your coverage. Everything, your coverage, benefits, limits of liability have all remained the same. Where you would see any changes in your total insured value would be next year on your 2023 renewal. We will not change your premium contribution throughout the year.
During the term of the-
Right, right.
Thank you.
That's a one-year term.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to?
So I'll move to accept recommendation two.
Option two.
Option two.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to accept option two. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. One in opposition. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Number seven is approval of vehicle use driver policy. This, this policy is a minimum standard policy that will apply to all departments superseding all other previously approved driver and vehicle use policies.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Okay.
Judge, if you'll read this policy on page four of 12 under vehicle inspection, every fleet user for the county has to do the following pre-trip inspection. They have to perform a visual walk around. They have to inspect the engine oil, the cooling system level, the transmission fluid level, the hydraulic fluid levels. I believe to check the transmission fluid, the vehicle has to be running to check the coolant. It can't be. We have to inspect the engine compartment for loose or frayed belts, check all lights, check tire pressure. That means you got to get out with a pressure gauge and check the tire. Check the tires for cracks. Check to ensure the windshield wipers are in good working condition. Check the windows and windshields for cracks and dirt. Check the registration inspection sticker and check the mirrors for dirt smudges. Judge, I think if we checked around this room, we could not find one single person that makes that inspection every morning before they go operate a vehicle. And I get a mental picture of our sheriff's department in particular out making those, those type inspections. I believe that we would be much better, the county would be much better served to have an individual that maybe when those vehicles came in at the end of an afternoon, that somebody that knew what they were looking for. Because Commissioner Colley, if they ask you to check the oil in your car, I suspect it would be problematic. It wouldn't be for me.
I could find the oil, but I don't think I could tell you about the transmission.
The transmission fluid, exactly. Judge, I don't think this is, I don't think this is what we want to do with our staff and our time. I think we need to start reading these things better. I believe that's part of the reason we're having a hearing just after this because we didn't read things well enough. So I'm asking that this go back to staff and that we make a recommendation on having one or more individuals in each department that does this on a daily basis instead of having our staff do it.
I would concur with that. I think that, that, that's a lot to ask of each individual that's using a county-owned vehicle on a per-trip basis. And I, and I think that it would probably be more efficient and make more sense for us to have somebody who, leave to the discretion of, you know, require this, but have it departmentally at the discretion of the department for the number of people whose responsibility that was to be as opposed to having each individual that uses a vehicle. I just think it would be much more efficient and I think it would be more practical.
Employee could be terminated if they, if they don't catch something. You see what I'm saying?
So, so I'm sorry, I just want to make sure it's clear that it's not a requirement. It does say recommended. And it also says inspection criteria should be coordinated with and approved by Fleet Services. And these are just basic rules of thumb. So I want to make sure it's clear that it's not a requirement and that nobody's going to get fired over it. So just to clarify a little bit.
But we will have someone in Fleet Management that can do the inspection?
So I did send this policy through Fleet. I sent it to all the law enforcement departments for any changes or recommendations. And, and that, that actually wasn't, they, they made no changes to this section. Fleet approved it. So I just, we can change it. We can table it and I can change it for, put it on court for next week. Just wanted to make sure all the information was out there. But it is not a requirement. It is a rule of thumb recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it says if they're recommended for individual department policy. So it's, it is a recommendation and everything on there is, there's a logical reason why you might-
Yeah, absolutely. It is good practice.
Yes, no question. I think as long as it's a recommendation and certainly when those vehicles come into Fleet, they're going to, they're going to check all those, probably everything on here anyway. That'd probably be part of the monthly or whatever long it is for an oil change and that sort of thing.
So might we, Judge, might we change the wording to say, as it reads, it says vehicle inspection? It is the responsibility of fleet user. Why don't we suggest that this is a recommendation rather than, you know, putting the sole responsibility?
Commissioner, it does say that the last sentence in this is, are recommended for individual-
Right. I read that, but I think recommended needs to be on that first line rather than the last or both lines. But the way you read it now, like our colleague said, you might interpret, you'll lose your job.
Shall we table this and have it come back next week?
And that's fine.
And it does also state that departments should establish policies to ensure that checks are accomplished. So, you know, and that's, and then it goes into, depending on the vehicle and all that, inspections could be different. So you want me to add recommendation?
It is the recommendation that the responsibility of fleet users. And you can follow it?
Okay.
The way it's reading, the responsibility is squarely on somebody's shoulder.
Okay.
But we're saying this is a recommendation rather than- Pardon me?
I don't want us to take anything out of the policy that we're approving here, the vehicle use and driver policy. I don't want to take anything out of that that would subject our property to be, you know, more easily, you know, not managed appropriately on maintenance. I mean, we just talked about maintenance in the previous agenda item and how critical that is. So I don't want to take anything out of the ability of the policy to, you know, get us the optimum, you know, maintenance or-
Life of the vehicle.
Right. But at the same time, you know, I think if it's a, if it's perceived to be a requirement for each individual user, then I think that may be a little too difficult.
Okay. I can make this change.
I believe if we add the recommendation statement, that would kind of smooth that. But it's not taking anything away.
Right.
We, I totally agree with the practice. As my colleague has said, I'd have to learn a few things before I take a car out. But, you know.
Okay, I can make that change. And so do y'all want to table it and then put, I'll put it back on next Tuesday?
Please table it.
Yeah, I would move that we defer action.
And I second that.
We already had a motion or a motion to approve and a second to approve. So if y'all want to-
Well, I think a motion to defer action under existing motion, I think, is still-
amend the motion to table.
Yeah.
And I'll second that.
You made the motion-
And I second.
Commissioner Colley, so that, so that now we have an amended motion to table this, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Correct? All right. All in favor of amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries.
And thank you for your work on this and continued work on this.
Okay, number eight, request from Information Technology for additional funding in the amount of $304.30 from capital improvement contingency fund to purchase a remote mount kit for one of the district attorney's replacement vehicles.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is request from Information Technology for additional funding in the amount of $637.50 for capital improvement contingency fund to purchase two remote mounting kits for two of the county attorney's replacement vehicles.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval to issue county diners' club card to Brazos County Health District employee Kelly Curry with the limit amount of $2,000 for travel, hotel, and conference reservations.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is award from bid number 22-115 Hot Mix Asphalt recommended awards Brazos Paving, Inc. and Knife River Corporation South.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of contract 22-142 for professional services grant assistance with Lucas Compton LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I'd just like to say, I think this is a wise move on our part because I just had a conversation with the auditor and we went over, and I provided her with some information about the Jobs Act, the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, and the amount of access that you have to what amounts to $1.2 trillion total is all conditioned upon grants. And having someone who, who is doing this professionally that can say, okay, which grant makes sense, should we combine with other entities in order to do this? I think that this is money well-spent in helping us time-wise focus what we want to really do as far as grants go because there is a significantly larger amount of money available now due to this act. But it's a very, very indirect path in order to be able to draw that money down.
I agree. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is new award bid for CIP 22-625 sale of excess dirt due to no response.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County FY 21-22, February through May 2022, cash contribution of $41,373, no, $41,373.47 to CSCD Specialty Court Program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of request from tax refund from Jordan and Chelsea Denning pursuant to tax code section 33.011.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is tax refund application for the following.
I move approval A, B, C.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A through C. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is commissioners coordinates for the following dates.
Move approval A through I. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A through I. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY 21/22, 34.1 through 34.7.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is personnel change status.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A and B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is payment of claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8115578 through claim number 8115684 and claim number 9005042 through claim number 9005104.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We will skip down to 23 and is acknowledgement of FY 2021-22 budget actuals from funds as of June 1, 2022. Number 24 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We presently have 38 in juvenile detention, 29 males, nine females. We have five in medical isolation due to protocol and we have 29 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 25, sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 615 today, 520 men, 95 women. We have 65 on electronic monitoring and 11 pending.
Thank you, Sheriff. 26 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none. Number 27 is call for citizens' input and dark concerns. Hearing none. We will go back up to number 21 and convene an executive session pursuant to the following. Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of county personnel. And B, Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated.
And Judge, subpart B, I filed a determination letter with the staff this morning, sending forth that it'd be in our best interest to be able to negotiate in closed session and request that you unanimously approve that action.
I move that we convene in closed session with regard to executive session under 551.0725.
And I second that.
Motion made and seconded. It needs to be a unanimous decision. All in favor, raise your right hand. None opposed? It's unanimous. I think we will take that one first in executive session and then go back up to the number A. We'll need sheriffs, commissioners, attorneys.
Time.
Okay, oh, it's 10:43. Katie for the, that, and I think Kim in that meeting for the contract. Is there anybody else that we need to put in there? I think that was it.
We do have a 10:30 workshop.
We do have a 10:30. We're running late on that, so, but as soon as we get out of executive session, we'll hold the workshop. Ready?
I've got to replace batteries. I'm going to step back.
Okay. Okay, we're coming out of executive session. There's no action to be taken and the next item is to adjourn the regular meeting. And I think it's, it's 11:17. And the next item is, would be a workshop, but I think y'all have to get set- And the next item is, it would be a workshop, but I think y'all have to get set up. We'll give you a few minutes to get everything changed over and set up for the next session.